Bring this man to order the board of Franklin County Commissioners Wednesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, eight thirty a.m. Shannon, roll call.
Commissioner Sotomayor.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Chair Dunn.
Present.
Archbishop Dickinson.
Present.
Commissioner Waymire.
Present. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance and stay standing for the invocation. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kalen Bones. I am the administrative assistant at Hope Anthem Church. My leadership thought for today is John thirteen fifteen, and it says, "I have set you an example that you should do as I have done for you. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this morning. I thank you for every individual that's in here, and I thank you for just a great leadership team. God, I pray that as they go throughout today and the rest of the week, you are with them and you are guiding them in all they do. And it's in your name that we pray. Amen. Thank you."
Thank you. Hey, Derek, do you want to just go ahead and start with CASA?
You bet.
Okay, welcome, ladies.
All right. Good morning. My name is Haley Harshaw. I'm the executive director for CASA of the Fourth Judicial District, so that includes Franklin, Coffey, Osage, and Anderson County. I want to go ahead and just give you updates as our program grows and continues to grow because this is part of your investment. So I want to make sure that going forward, you're aware of what your contributions are doing, what your influence is doing for our program. I recently started this position in May of twenty twenty-two, so just recently this year, and I'm excited about the growth and progress that we're already seeing. But just to give you a little bit of history, CASA has been involved in around fifteen hundred cases within our district since we were started in two thousand and two. So CASA volunteers, some information on them, they're community volunteers that our program goes out, recruits, trains, and screens, so that way they can serve as advocates for children who have experienced abuse or neglect in our counties. They do so through information gathering, collaboration, reporting, and they're an unbiased community member coming into a space to give the best interest recommendations that they can for the children. Too often, there's turnover within the foster care system, there's changes in attorneys, there's constant changing of placements for these children, so a CASA serves as a consistent adult who's willing to step and be a mentor to these children as they go through the process. And our goal is ultimately, we want children to stay out of foster care and prevent that as much as possible. The average stay for a child in foster care is twenty-three months. Of course, there's those cases, we have some now where children have been in there for years, upwards of five to eight years is the longest ones that we have right now. So that's just some background information on what we do and why we do it. I also want to just go ahead and say thank you for your contributions to the program and just explain what those have helped us do so far. So that, your contributions has helped for us to recruit since I started four volunteers. Each volunteer has the ability to serve two children within the area. So the more volunteers that we have, the more children that we're able to serve. And in Franklin County alone, there's an average of seventy-five children just in out-of-home placements. So of course, our goal is to hopefully eventually down the road, serve every child who needs an advocate and is eligible for our services. And we have a good start, like I said, with the four volunteers already. We recently hired a volunteer coordinator who can also help us reach a greater capacity and supervise more volunteers. Her goal is primarily to do the recruitment, the screening, and the training, and help with administrative duties with myself. So we're excited to have her, and she's already just excelled in what she's been doing. So that's another aspect of our program that through your contributions, we're able to support. And then something else that we have, if you can turn your attention to the screen, our program created and developed this. So we paid for the hosting of our website, but we created all the aspects that are on here. So if you go to our website, it is fourcasa.org, short and sweet and to the point, right? And on here, you can see there's options to volunteer, donate to our program, there's information about our program, and ways that you can volunteer. If you go to our volunteer tab, what it will do is say, "What can I do?", and it provides the opportunities for volunteering with our program. So maybe advocating for a child is not something that you can work into your schedule at this point. Well, we still have other options for you, too. You can be an ambassador for our program, so help out with recruiting events, just share the word about CASA, and you know, maybe you can't volunteer being an advocate, but find someone who can. There's board membership. We have open positions on our board currently to, to help contribute and make plans to serve more children. And then also just some opportunities, help with clerical duties, grant writing, and things like that as well. So if you wanted to learn more about those, then you could hit those little buttons there. This tells you about the requirements to become an advocate. So like I said, each advocate gets screened, so we do background screenings on all of them. We also do the initial thirty hours of training, which I will be enrolled in that training at the end of this month, so that's something that our program can offer in-house to volunteers. And then also, we provide them with just an understanding of how the court system works, so that way when they're going into it, they're confident and can do the best job that they can for those children. So all of our information is on there. We also have where volunteers can fill out the form if they want to apply. That application, same for volunteers, ambassadors, and even the board membership. We'd like to make it as simple as possible for everyone. So again, thank you for your contribution because that's what helped this get up and running. Prior to this, we did not have our own website. It was based out of the Kansas CASA website. So you would have to go to their page and then find us specifically in the list of all the programs. Then, once you hit that, then you have to fill out the specific form. So we wanted to streamline everything so we can be efficient for the kids that we're serving. So that is where our program is at and how we're growing, the activities that we're doing. You'll see us in the community at different events that are being hosted. But I still want to talk about the need. Like I said, there's seventy-five children in out-of-home placements alone in Franklin County, and I want to bring awareness to that because many may not know that that's the number that there are of those children. And when I say out-of-home placements, that means they can be from Franklin County but across the state. And these volunteers travel to those kids to provide them these services, and again, hopefully find them a home, so they're not in the system very long. So part of that is just needing resources, needing influence to get the word out about what our program is so that we can serve those kids. But I would be happy to take any questions that you have about our program, what the process looks like, if you have any of those.
So you serve four different counties, so are you the only program person? Do you have people in the other counties also, or?
No, it is myself. It is myself and my volunteer coordinator. We serve all four counties and go out there and do the recruitment events and everything.
Do you have any business cards?
I do, yes.
I'd like to have one.
Okay, sir.
The reason why I'd like to contact you, there's a partially sponsored county project or something we offer that CASA hasn't been using lately, and I'd like to talk to you about it.
Yes, for sure.
Bike program. Change, to change people, you've changed down there two or three times in the last year or two, and we've kind of lost contact with one of the, you know, we do, and I just want to touch base with you.
Yes, and that has been an issue with our program. There has been some turnover issues, and then especially with COVID-19, that's caused some strain in the volunteers that we've had. But like I said, I'm really excited about the progress and the capacity that we can have our program to grow moving forward at this point, so.
Well, good luck. I know that when you became the director, people were just like, "Oh, she's going to be great!", so we're excited with what you can do, so good luck.
Thank you.
And I think it, you know, she reached out to me to come in front of the five of you. We've never had an update or a presentation like this from CASA.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And I think that speaks well to your passion for this program and your desire to bring attention to it and the kids in Franklin County. So I think it's fantastic. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. And like I said, I want to make sure that I'm continuously updating you on progress because this is your investment, this is what you're contributing to. So I believe it's important that you know that what you're putting into is serving those children who are from the area that you are serving as well, so thank you.
One thing I have to add is we're being more or less televised videotaped, and people might not know what CASA stands for.
Yes. We use acronyms all the time. So CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate, so volunteers who are appointed by the judge to come into a child in need of care case, or children who have been abused or neglected. So then they come in and make recommendations based on the information that they've gathered to best serve the child.
Thank you, that's a great report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good rest of your day. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek, want to do the Historical Society? Are we ready for that?
Well, I'll let Diana do that.
Yeah, do it.
Morning, Diana.
Good morning. You always have to flip it over three times.
Where am I at here?
USB disc up at the top.
Not the right one?
Presentation there, perfect.
I didn't hook up our clicker real quick.
The mouse will work for it.
And that's why we have an IT department, yay!
Thank you very much.
All right, we are set. Good morning. I am happy to have been able to crawl out from under a pile of boxes in order to come and speak to you this morning. I wanted to just update you on the progress that we've made this summer. Our Archives and Research Center is just about ready to reopen. Between April and July, our staff and volunteers put in almost fourteen hundred hours just into packing, prepping our new location, moving, and unpacking at the Archives and Textiles. And what's really exciting is many of the volunteers who helped us this time around have never worked with us before. So we actually have a whole new pool of people who are engaged with the Historical Society now, and that's really exciting. You might recall, that first picture on the left is what that second floor used to look like. It was a very unfinished space, and the county did paint the floor, but we did the rest. Our volunteers and staff primed, painted, installed wallboard, painted the stairs, installed safety treads, finished up that room, finished the wall down in the basement, repaired the room that was full of shelving that had been pulled out and the walls were damaged, so we had to repair those. We recognize this as an important space. You really only have one chance to do it well when it's empty, so we worked really hard to get it in the best shape that we could. We actually went through twenty-five gallons of paint and primer, and my staff told me that this is the last time they were painting and priming anything for a really good long time, but it looks really good. And so what you're seeing on the right-hand side is our textiles in place. There's still tons of boxes because one of our challenges is that the shelving did not fit the same way it did in our old location. So we are having to rearrange things, which means re-cataloging a lot of things so that we can find them again. And we have lots of pictures of people helping us move. We worked with a moving truck for two weeks to move our collection. We had fifteen hundred boxes and ledgers to move. We had to get creative on how we packed some of it because a lot of it is very fragile and rare, and we wanted, we knew that if we damaged it, it was gone. And a lot of it had to be hand-carried up and down the stairs. We couldn't dolly on those stairs, so we had to just hand books and things down. The worst really was the ledgers. We have five hundred and twenty-seven ledgers that weigh around fifteen to twenty pounds each, and each of them had to be hand-carried up or down a flight of stairs. But we were really fortunate, our computer, our community responded to our request for help with boxes, so hundreds of boxes were showing up, so we did not have to buy boxes at least. And we found a lot of ways to be creative about other ways that we package things. In that upper right-hand corner, you see that we are actually Saran wrapping the drawers from our flat files, which have maps. There's no other way to pack them. So we got pretty creative, and there were a lot of people who just went above and beyond. These things are heavy, that shelving is heavy, and we were disassembling it and reassembling it. So two weeks in, right at that moment, triple-digit heat or rain, or rain and triple-digit heat on one particular day. It was quite an undertaking. And I will mention, our county maintenance staff, they were only able to help us for one day, for a couple of hours, but they moved the heaviest of our furniture for us. We're really grateful for that. And as I said, a lot of our shelving either did not fit, or couldn't make it up and down the stairs, or was so derelict that we knew if we took it apart, it was not going to survive the trip. Advent Health happens to be in the middle of moving some of their records as well, and they actually donated twenty-one shelving units to us that we are currently repurposing to hold those heavy ledgers. So that was an incredible gift for us. We expect it to take at least a year to finish unpacking, but we're in a position now that we'll be able to reopen that building for researchers beginning on September twenty-sixth. We'd really like to invite you to the Chamber Coffee, though, that we're having on October ninth. We'd love for you to see the space, how we're making it our own, and then what we hope to do with it over the next few years. At the depot, you'll probably recall that we received a reimbursement heritage trust fund grant from the State Historic Preservation Office to work on the roof. And the project stalled because we just had that cataclysmic intersection of the pandemic, the soaring cost of materials, and then discovering our roof was worse than we thought. We just learned within the last week that the State Historic Preservation Office has agreed to increase our grant by almost forty thousand dollars. And so we now are able to actually get started on repairing the roof, and we're just going to do as much of it as we possibly can. And so we're really excited about that. So beyond the lookout, we'll start working on the roof. And in the meanwhile, one-room school is getting ready to start. Last year, we had a record twenty-six classes that came because the schools wanted to bring all those now fifth graders who weren't able to go during that twenty-twenty-one year because of the pandemic. So we were really busy. And then we also have schools that are coming from out of county that have heard about the program. So we're expecting a busy fall, and we also are now developing a smaller, shorter program that's appropriate for adult and community group audiences, too, because there are a lot of people who are really interested in the history of one-room schools. So we're looking for a way to reach them as well. The Lawrence Model Railroad Club has adopted our layout. They usually, for every ten hours they spend there, they probably spend forty at home working on things. That layout is quite old. It was started in nineteen sixty-five, but they've really run with it. You can see on the left, they have just made a replica of the cylindrical grain elevators at the co-op. And it comes complete with spinning turbines and even a little red blinky light to warn aircraft away, which I assume is also going to have to be HO scale. But they, they're now working on the Ross Milling Building, the Stone Building, the really old one, that's the same age as the depot. But their really big undertaking is going to be completely rewiring the entire depot, or the entire model railroad layout, which, think about it, since nineteen sixty-five, one model railroad after another has been adding to it. It's, it's pretty convoluted, but they are doing all of it, and they're doing it at no cost to us. This is totally volunteer work and volunteer-donated materials. We have had a lot of complaints about the sad state of the paint on our caboose, and I am actually very happy to say that while I don't have all the details just yet, the Gopert Foundation has awarded us the funds to properly restore the exterior of the paint, so I'm very excited about that. It will look much healthier. The person who we're bringing in is himself a rolling stock collector and has actually restored the caboose. That's at Acheson in front of their visitor's center, which looks fantastic. So we will be announcing more about that soon. We just found this out this week. So our visitorship at the depot has returned, or has surpassed pre-pandemic numbers this year, month by month. We're really happy about that. In June, we managed to keep our doors open late for some very wiped-out Bike Across Kansas participants. We created a mini-exhibit for the Cyclone Room at the high school where the participants were sleeping. We reopened Dietrich Cabin this summer, which is the first time we've been able to open the cabin since twenty nineteen, and we're currently working with elementary school teachers to incorporate a visit to the cabin as part of their curriculum. Next week, we're installing an exhibit on Ottawa in the Osho County Community College's Rotunda area. We're also, again, still working with Humanities Kansas to prepare for the Smithsonian exhibit that's coming next year, and we're resuming our in-person programming. But we do have a lot of demand to keep offering programming online. Many of our local residents are just not able to come to a program in person for a variety of reasons, so my next goal is to find a way to do hybrid programming and do it well, but with our limited staff. So I'm working on that right now. We have unboxed many of our archives finally, so we are also back to sharing on social media. And that image on the right, you probably saw it because everyone else did, that is about the Ottawa Stock Car Association track that used to be west of town, and this thing got seventy-one thousand views in four days. People are really, really interested in this. So I will tell you that we have coming up a program about Nellie Dawn. So you might recall, one of our goals was to take programming outside of Ottawa and to reach people from around the county. So we're trying to find new locations where we can offer programs. This program is offered by Marla Day, who is a curator at K-State's Historic Costume and Textiles Museum, and she'll be talking about Parsons' native Nellie Dawn, who built a fashion empire on the vision that women deserved nice clothing regardless of what their budget was. And so we will be hosting this actually at the Greenwood Township Community Center right across from the Greenwood Baptist Church, and I'm hoping to have a few programs like this all around the county because Franklin County is more than just Ottawa. So I want to make sure that we, we get out and meet as many people and serve as many people as we can. We are working on fundraising events, big and small. Coming up in October is the History Bicycle Tour that we're co-creating with the Ottawa Bike and Trail Shop. And, you know, many cyclists come to Ottawa, and they may come once or twice to ride the two big trails. If we create unique opportunities to experience the county and ride the county in different ways, they come back again and again. So our goal is to create a unique tour that will combine gravel roads, the trails, and local history, and it's something that we can recreate and reshape in different ways every few months. And so that is what we're, we're going to give a try to this October. Thank you so much for the opportunity to tell you about what we're doing. Thank you for the support that you give the Historical Society because we wouldn't be able to do this without you. And if I haven't said it already, I really want to thank Brandon Sands and our maintenance staff. They have been invaluable to us as we've gone through this move-in process. I know that they work in a lot of buildings and have a lot of obligations, but they've always been available to us when we've had questions or needed something. So I just wanted to really acknowledge the help that they've given us. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is there anything left over at the old, old building?
Oh, really good question. There are a few pieces of shelving and one exhibit piece, disassembled exhibit, that we're trying to figure out what best to do with. We're trying to rehome some of the shelving that's still usable, but otherwise, we're, we are moved out of the building itself. We still have our storage building behind it, but we're moved out of the building.
Any other questions for Diana? That's a good report. Sounds like a lot of exciting things are going to be coming out of the visitor's center now.
I hope so, and I'm, we're excited. I think we've set up the space in a way that we'll be able to use it to do more programming for smaller programs and things as well, which is something, if you recall, we just didn't have the room to do in our old location. So I'm really hopeful.
Thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
Derek, do you have anything else for us today?
I do not. Yeah, thank you.
Any public omic today? Okay, the consent agenda, we got three items. A minutes from the August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two minute meeting, September seventh minutes, and September seventh budget hearing.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes.
Hey, Roy, I'm going to ask if you're okay with it. Let's move our bond defeesance item up to number one so that we can get these gentlemen on their way. That's the last item, number seven.
Okay, I agree. Let's get, let's get that out of the way. Kind of contentious representatives here. Who's going to be first?
Good morning. David Arterberry with Stiefel Nicholas. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I have with me Stan Jones from our office, who we worked together on a lot of transactions, and I thought it might be good for him to come down and hear, hear this process and what you're all kind of going through. I've got a handout here that might look familiar from a few months ago. It's just some detailed calculations about the, the bond defeesance, but let me kind of give you a real high-level overview of it and then talk a little bit about the process that you'll be going through to kind of complete the defeesance of your two thousand and nineteen bonds. Basically, the plan, and I know you guys have been talking about this at prior meetings, is to use funds that are going to be freed up in your operating budget as a result of receiving some ARPA money. Use those freed-up funds to create an escrow account that will pay off your two thousand and nineteen bonds. By doing that, you'll be able to reduce your future-year debt service obligations, and then hopefully that will allow you then to use that freed-up money in your budget to pay for, for other things. Today, what you have in front of you is a resolution that authorizes proceeding with the transaction, and in a minute, I'll turn it over to Tyler Ellsworth to kind of go through more specifically what that resolution does. But in terms of the savings that you will get, if you want to turn over to page one of this handout, there's a yellow box on it that sort of summarizes how this will impact your, your budget. Right now, there's three million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of remaining payments due on the two thousand and nineteen bonds. If you wanted, in order to create this escrow account that I was mentioning that would provide for the payment of those bonds, it's going to cost about two million eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars to buy the securities to put into this escrow account. There's about twenty-two thousand dollars associated with the costs of setting up the escrow and verifying it and paying the, the bank that will hold the money. That will end up resulting, when all said and done, in about seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of savings to, to the taxpayers. So a nice benefit, now that savings is spread over, you know, the next, I think, about fifteen to sixteen years, but nonetheless, that's a, you know, a nice, obviously healthy amount of money. That is, the savings is a little bit less than I think we were looking at last time, and the reason it's a little bit less is previously, we'd been anticipating that you'd set up this escrow account in, in August. Then, if you did that, the money would then be invested for a slightly longer period of time than if you're setting up the escrow now, which is going to be towards the end of September. So the fact that it took a month or two to get this completed ended up causing the amount, the cost of that escrow to go up a little bit. On the flip side of that, though, keep in mind that, that, that On the flip side of that, though, keep in mind that that money that you're putting into that escrow has been sitting in your coffers now for the last couple of months, earning interest. So even though it's costing a little more to set up the escrow, about $16,000 or $17,000 more, you've been earning money that it was helped to, you know, offset that extra cost. So if you adopt the resolution today, what would then happen is either probably tomorrow or Friday, we'll update these calculations, and we will go ahead and have a CPA firm verify the calculations to determine, to verify that the funds that are put into the escrow and the investments in the escrow, which are U.S. Treasury securities, will be sufficient to pay off the bonds until their call date. After that's verified, the securities will be purchased, and an escrow trust agreement will be executed. If all that goes as planned, then on the 29th of September, the county will use that $2.85 million to purchase the escrow securities, and the escrow will then be officially set up, and those old bonds will then be paid for from that escrow, and you won't have to pay for them. No, I kind of rushed through here, but I know you've also been talking about this now for a couple of months, but just wanted to kind of make sure everyone's comfortable and knows what we're doing and what the plans are.
Any questions for David while we have him up here?
Pretty straightforward.
Tyler, you want to go through exactly the resolutions?
Thank you.
Hey, Tyler.
Morning.
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to be with you this morning. Dave did a great job of outlining, in very simple terms, I think, what's a somewhat complex process. The only couple of things that I have to add are specifically what the resolution authorizes. So we're entering this escrow agreement with Security Bank of Kansas City. The resolution that we prepared for your consideration this morning authorizes the execution of that escrow agreement and taking the necessary action to set up that escrow, deposit the funds into escrow that will be used to pay off the bonds eventually and to pay the costs of setting that all up. And for all intents and purposes, once we complete this process on September 29th, then for your purposes, these bonds are basically off your books, essentially. You don't have to worry about levying for debt service. You don't have to worry about making principal and interest payments. The only exception to that is with respect to your statutory debt limit. You can issue debt up to 30% of your assessed value. We're nowhere near that. We're never going to be anywhere near that. But these bonds still count towards that debt limit until the escrow is completed and pays off the bonds several years from now. So that's the only caveat. But with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
While it's held in escrow, is there any interest made on it?
There is, well...
Or do we make any money on it?
That's right. The escrow is set up, and I can defer back to Dave on that. But in simple terms, escrow, there are U.S. government treasury securities that are purchased that do earn interest. So you will be able to earn a little bit of interest, and that interest will go and is factored into the principal and interest payments that have to be made.
So it's all factored, it's all in there?
That's right. It's all wrapped into one. And the only limitation on that is there is an interest rate that you're paying on these bonds, and because these bonds were issued on a tax-exempt basis, you can't purchase securities to earn interest higher than the interest rate on the bonds. So we have to make sure that that's all factored in. But Dave and I and the trustee and the CPA that we will engage to verify everything will be well aware of that, and that will not be a problem. So, good question. Good question.
Tyler, from a reporting standpoint, when I report our annual bonds every year to the state, will I include this or not include this?
I think we'll include this and maybe footnote that if we can, that we've set this up, because under state law, it's unclear whether this still counts towards your debt limit. And so our position is the conservative approach, which is, well, we don't know, we can't say definitively that it doesn't count, so we still reflect these.
Okay.
Any other questions, Tyler? Permanent motion would read, I make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing cash defeasance of the Series 2019 A bonds.
Happy to move to approve that motion or make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Tyler, hey, Roy, I'm going to have Dave come up and have you sign an agreement just right quick before we, so we can get him on down the road.
Get it going.
Okay. Thank you.
Tyler, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Saving it by $1,000 is a good thing.
Are you aware of any other communities that are taking their ARPA funds to defuse debt?
I talked to some that have considered doing it. I think a lot of them are still sort of debating exactly what they feel best.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Before we transition on, I would tell you, and they would know better than me who they're working with, but I am aware of a lot of organizations who got their ARPA funds and immediately turned around and spent their ARPA funds. And it's not every day that you can make a decision that is ultimately going to save the taxpayers nearly $800,000. So I applaud the five of you for your vision and doing this, for your patience in letting us, you know, retain those ARPA funds and take deliberate action with them, because it would have been easy. And indeed, a lot of Commissioners, just like you, got that money and turned around and immediately spent it. But $800,000 is a huge amount of money to save, so kudos on that.
Proud of what it says about organization in our community with, that's what you choose to do with the money. It's not the funnest thing. It's probably maybe not the most popular thing, but it can't be denied, it's the most, it's a very responsible thing. It's a very measured and disciplined thing to do with the money when you, whether it's your personal finances or an organization, when you have a little bit of found money or you choose to put it towards debt, that says a lot.
Agreed. All said.
Okay. Get back to regular order of business. Changing the company for the credit card purchases. Jody, you want to talk about this?
Morning.
Morning, Jody.
Morning. So currently, we have a credit card processing company that we use for in-house credit cards in several different departments. Motor Vehicle uses it for registrations, et cetera. The Tax Office uses it for taxes, obviously. Transfer Station uses it. The Sheriff's Department uses it for several different things, whether it be their fees or when it's their turn to collect personal property tax for us. And the Clerk's Office also uses it. And currently, we have a company that charges 2.95% of the person's total for the fee so that the county doesn't absorb any fees. And when we signed up with them three years ago, they gave us a deal at 2.5%. And we had a three-year contract with them. And now, I wasn't actively seeking a different company, because I do like the company we have right now. As far as bookkeeping, has been much better than the company prior to them has been. But Kansas State Bank had mentioned that they had a possible opportunity where we might be able to get a lower rate for our customers, so I was all for hearing that. And I like everything that I've seen and heard so far on this company. It would bring it down to 2.5, so 0.45% isn't a lot when you're talking like maybe about a $10 fee or something, maybe the transfer station or something. But when you're talking about thousands of dollars in the Treasurer's Office for taxes or you've recently purchased a high-end vehicle, an motor vehicle, and now you have to pay sales tax, et cetera, that 0.45% can make a big difference for the customer. So I mostly just wanted to make sure that you were aware that this is in, it's not fully in process yet, because I do want to bring it before you. But I do have to give the other company 30-day notice that we would be leaving their service. My hope is October 31st, which is a Monday, to be able to finish with the first company, which is GovPayNet/AllPaid, and start with the new company the following day, November 1st, so that end of 31st midnight, which would technically really be 5 o'clock for us, but, and then Monday morning, first thing with the new company. The new company sees no problem with that. Their name is Certified Payments, and there would be virtually no extra training because it's just card swiping. And we had the opportunity to have card readers at the counter, you know, much fancier where the customer can put in their PIN and all that. But we would have to pay for those devices. And since we have so many departments, I didn't think that was feasible. It was, just wasn't good sense. So I opted for the card swipers, and hopefully, they'll be at the counter where the customer can actually swipe them themselves. This way, their card never leaves their vision, you know. Unfortunately, one of the departments has no other way around it, but they take the customer's card, go back to their desk, and do, you know, the transaction for them. This way, hopefully, we will avoid that. But I just wanted to let you know that we were in the process of doing that, and hopefully it'll be a smooth process for us.
What would happen if the old company said, well, we'll match whatever the new company would do?
That's possible, that they would do that. But I feel, since I've already spoken to, you know, the second company, that we would probably still go with the second company. The first company, in three years, they can offer me the same thing, and I can switch back, I guess, you know. But they were at 2.5% when we started with them, and then over the course of the three years, they went up to the 2.95%, which I get it, you know, they're all allowed to make a certain amount of money, and they get a decent percentage of those fees themselves. So, but I honestly had not given that much thought. I figured if they had already offered, had made me pay, have the customers pay 2.95% that they probably weren't going to back down.
Is the second company, is it the 2.5, is it for a certain amount of time, or do you, are you...
No, it's just, just like when I signed up with...
So you could sign up at 2.5, and then they could turn around and raise it?
Exactly. Yeah.
This is a three-year deal, too?
Yes. And the 2.95, I mean, they can change that to go up as well, too, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Kind of at the mercy of the moneymakers.
But for the 2.5 is for three years. They can't change it in that first three years.
Did you see that in the contract, Derek? I didn't specifically see that.
I'll, I mean, obviously, before we have you execute that...
Right.
Verify that.
Right.
I mean, my understanding is the three-year agreement will lock us into the 2.5, but obviously, that's something we'll be certain of. More than anything, this was meant to be informational and ascertain whether or not the five of you have any issue with this, as it, it's going to be, I mean, it's going to keep what the taxpayer is paying flat as opposed to it being an increase.
I think if you're going to use a credit card, you're going to use a credit card, you know, and whatever it costs, you're going to use it, so.
It is very interesting to watch people's decisions when they find out how much it is, because we can do the process and tell them, okay, it's going to be $18.25. And some people are like, I'll go home and get my checkbook, which I would be, too, if I didn't tell them I'd just get my checkbook. But other ones, eh, it's all right, go for it. So, you know. But if I can, you know, help them a little bit, even if they have, you know, kind of a cavalier attitude about, ah, no problem, still save them a little bit anyway.
All right.
Any other questions, Jody? I think we're all agreed on it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to consider approval of the WIC contract. Brenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. You said the WIC contract. I do have three in front of you, but we will start with the WIC contract. Basically, that's the contract that's been here for many, many years. As you've heard me say before, we have fabulous staff and staff that are learning new duties. So we've kind of rearranged opportunities to serve our clientele in Franklin County and the surrounding areas. So we have switched staff around, and in that process, we were able to increase the grant money about $10,000, $10,487 for the next year. So just a great opportunity. I think with a good marketing plan, we may be, in time, be able to increase that even more. But right now, with just a little bit of a change, we were able to increase that.
And to be clear, all three of Brenda's items today are, pertain to the county receiving money. So in my mind, these are no brainers. But as much as anything, I wanted to draw attention to that back, put it in front of you so that you're aware. But yes, this is, I mean, this is $95,000 that would come into our coffers, so wholeheartedly recommend it. Do it every year.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions on that, if anyone has any questions on that.
Who was to go that was doing the WIC that, didn't you have somebody that was doing WIC for a long time that just recently retired?
Mary Ann Parkin is going to next year.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and you're right, we're in the process of training new staff. Yes, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the WIC contract dated October 1st this year to September 30th next.
Second. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dunn.
Yes. Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Which one would you like to discuss next? Would you like to talk about the Central Kansas Grant or the SEK WIC opportunity?
The next item is...
Sorry, I don't have the agenda.
South East County.
SEK, great. SEK MCHD is Southeast Kansas Multi-County Health Department. WIC is designed that you have to have a registered dietitian in order to have the program. Those are other counties. I have worked for them about a day a month since 2008. I stopped working for them. They did try to find a dietitian, and they did for a short while. But again, I want to emphasize two things, is that if they do not have a registered dietitian, they cannot have WIC in their county, which means several hundred people would not have service. So I can work for them for a few hours a month, about six to 10 hours a month. And again, all those many clientele will be able to have services. And in that process, in a year, we would make anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000. The money would come directly as a contract to the county. Now, it is all depending upon how many hours I work. I like to be very efficient, so that's why I don't want to promise any certain amount. But it is income and a service to help more people. Any questions I can answer on that?
I mean, it does take Brenda's time out of the county, but the county would generate revenue, and it's also, I mean, it builds the brand. I mean, it helps establish us as, I mean, clearly, someone who cares a lot about WIC, a lot about public health, so happy to endorse this as well.
Any questions?
When you think public health, we're not on an island. It's a population that doesn't really care where that county line is and travels between communities, so.
Thank you for mentioning that. In fact, at the governor's conference, that's exactly what they ask. We need to help each other, because again, not every county has all the resources they need, and we should help each other.
Well, and those people are routinely in this county and vice versa, so.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And they redesigned WIC, then honestly, for the most part, I'll be able to be in my office.
So I can work for them for a few hours a month, about six to 10 hours a month, and again, all those many clientele will be able to have services, and in that process, in a year, we would make anywhere from $5,000 to $8,000. The money would come directly as a contract to the county. Now, it is all depending upon how many hours I work. I like to be very efficient, so that's why I don't want to promise any certain amount, but it is income and a service to help more people. Any questions I can answer on that?
I mean, it does take Brenda's time out of the county, but the county would generate revenue, and it's also, I mean, it builds the, the brand. I mean, it helps establish us as, I mean, clearly, someone who cares a lot about WIC, a lot about public health, so happy to endorse this as well.
Any questions?
When you think public health, we're not on an island. It's a, it's a population that doesn't really care where that county line is and travels between communities, so.
Thank you for mentioning that. In fact, at the governor's conference, that's exactly what they ask. We need to help each other, because again, not every county has all the resources they need, and we should help each other.
Well, and those people are routinely in this county and vice versa, so.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And they redesigned WIC, then honestly, for the most part, I'll be able to be in my office, helping those clients. I'm not saying not 100% maybe, but for the most part, I won't even have to leave as much. So it's more like, again, a consultant contract opportunity. So, thank you for that.
Permanent action be a make motion to approve the S E K M C H D WIC contract date December 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2023.
I did notice that it's not for a whole year.
What's that?
It's not for a whole year.
The reason why is that in order to set WIC clients, we set three months out. They really wanted me to start like a month ago, but I need to finish some things here, and we also need to set up the calendar correctly to help the staff and all those.
For a whole year.
Yeah, correct. Now, next year, they'll want to do it for the whole year.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair done.
Yes. East Kansas, East Central Kansas Area on Aging.
So in that grant opportunity, that is a 3D program that is going to serve those that are 60 and older, and they will allow me to get $3,000 for the next three years for a total of $9,000 income. I also have received this a grant, a lot at the hospital, just a great opportunity, again, to offer diabetes and nutrition. This program is specifically evidence-based, so that is why I do like to focus on diabetes and nutrition, because we are able to show outcomes that are going to meet the requirements of the grant. And I've worked with everyone down at East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging for many years. They're awesome, as everyone knows, and I would like to be able just to take this opportunity to serve more people. I envision classes in this, right in this area, also in the Health Department, just to serve more clients, patients, and offer more classes in diabetes and nutrition, so.
Any questions on this? Pause the motion, be a make motion to approve the East Central Kansas Area on Aging grant date October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2025. I see you.
Second.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair done.
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
Next item up for, thank you, Brenda.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Brenda?
You might let people know about this new booster shot by Valant.
Yes, thank you. We got it yesterday, and actually, as I was coming here, we were getting a little bit more. So the exciting news, we're looking at a date. I, I won't say it out loud until I have a confirmation, but we will definitely start to market that. So we definitely already have, I know, gosh, 30 to 40 people on our list, so we'll be starting calling them today. Actually, I think we're above that number now. So, yes, so we have 500 doses, and I think that's what I saw arriving. So we're gonna start educating the community that we do now have it available and encourage people to come get it. So, thank you.
Which, what vaccine is it?
The Omicron, the one that targets Omicron?
Yes, it's called Byvalant, so, yeah, it's the new booster.
And when you get that, go ahead and get your flu shot, and then get hold on it one time.
Yep.
There you go.
That's right. In fact, I had a call the other day, and of course, the nurses were fabulous, said absolutely better flu, Byvalant. So we're gonna accommodate anybody that wants to do that, so, yes, thank you for that. I appreciate that, yeah.
Is there a fee for that, Brenda?
No, there is not. We have an administration fee if you have insurance, but if you do not have insurance, we won't. But there is no cost, actually, of the vaccine.
Thank you.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Okay, next item up for discussion is a board in the bid for Kansas State Bank in the amount of $558,744.66 for two motor graders. David?
Yes, back on August 3rd, the, you all asked us to solicit bids for the financing of the two motor graders that we just purchased. Those bids were opened last, last Tuesday, I believe it was, on the 6th, at the clerk's office. Despite sending out multiple solicitations to, excuse me, to all the local banks and others that have regularly participated in this bid opportunity, we only received two bids. The lowest and best bid was from Kansas State Bank in the amount of $558,744.66. The second bid from Great Southern Bank was withdrawn. They had a error on their bid sheet that, it would have been a problem if, if they'd gone forward with that. So they, they withdrew that, and so what this amounts to is an interest rate of 3.9% over the, the life of the loan, with a total interest rate, interest cost of $58,744.66.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Can we afford to start moving away from borrowing money for our motor graders?
That is something.
Obviously, your department can't without.
Right.
Cash from capital fund.
Yeah.
I hope you don't have that much just laying around.
No, we, we certainly do not currently. That is something that intended to begin researching. In fact, I've already started gathering some of the data necessary to study that, but currently, I don't have a firm answer for you.
Well, we were getting 2%.
The last time, it was 1.2 or somewhere in there. It was very, very low.
But now, if they're gonna start costing us $30,000 a unit, we have nine units, they're replaced every five years?
Seven.
Seven.
And so that, that is.
About $40,000 a year.
Significant difference from what we were paying just a year ago. The world is different today, but certainly, it is worth studying. Other factors besides just the, the interest rates, we'll need to decide if we want to keep the equipment longer, more hours, and what the probability of repair costs or extended warranties and those sorts of things.
Yeah, I think that's another variable you can, could turn with, but it's pretty simple math, but I think it's more to our finance and our administrator if we can afford it.
I say, I.
Obviously, you don't have that, yeah, and then it's up to us if that's where we want to put our funds, but.
Yeah.
Since the interest rate's three, four times higher, I think it's a conversation we need to start, start having.
Happy to have David research those things, but I agree, I think the real question is can Janet and I create a budget wherein we fit this that makes sense and doesn't leave us short other places, doesn't dramatically alter the mill levy?
Once we get through our seven years, then, I mean, it's, we can start using the money we would have used for debt service, really, once we get through about two-thirds of the seven years, it'll start paying for itself with that debt service, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think.
We could swallow the pill, we'll.
Yeah, that's exactly right. I think it'd be painful at first, but if we can, can do it, then yeah, I agree, it would be the better model, I mean, even at 1.2%, but, but yeah, it's just getting there. Certainly, we can look at that.
It also depends on whether it's another year that we have, you have a lot of other purchases besides the rug graders, because all of a sudden, it's like, but those are all.
Yeah, those, historically, we've, we've, have a lease, you know, a line item for lease purchases, and then we also have another line item that goes into our equipment reserve fund that we're able to write, write a check for those equipment purchases.
Well, and we can pretty well guarantee that interest rate will go up another half percent here pretty soon, so.
Fortunately.
Any other questions, David? We wanna table it and do the math?
You're not ready to do that this year, though, right?
Yeah, I mean, how would we do that this year, would be my question. I mean, we just.
We'd have to pull it out of capital.
I think you have to do, do it, go ahead and move it forward this year, and then the next time we're ready to purchase, or I don't.
I almost feel like, yeah, this would be, and feel free to chime in, Janet, but I don't know where, I mean, I don't know, I don't know where we would, I guess, potentially a reserve transfer, but that's not, I mean, that's gonna leave us, and that's over half of our potential transfer.
Of course, next year, we would have debt service of $120,000, $130,000 that wouldn't be serviced in this, so, but.
It's definitely something that we could consider moving forward. I don't, I don't know right now, on such short notice, that we would want to do that without having time to study what the, what the effects would be, and, and I don't want to, you know, we don't want to potentially have to re-bid this again with motor graders. I, I think it'd be the best bet to study that and, and, or if we possibly can.
I'd mentioned wanting to do this when we bought them, but.
So when we, we're, this is three, how many?
Two.
Two, okay, so then what is, what do we do next year?
We, we don't have any schedule for next year.
Sure, hmm.
So is there early payoff penalties on these?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
Be an option.
Yeah, and, and that may be, yeah, that may be a, a better option in terms of if we want to get this secured now, and certainly, we can look at that and contemplate the effects on the budget, and then, yeah, if we want to pay off early, then we save the interest we would have paid anyway, obviously, so.
Really doubt local bank has any kind of penalty for paying, paying early. Well.
Well, the way interest rates are going up weekly, might be a good time to do it now. Any other questions, David? Pause the motion, be a make motion for the financing bid to Kansas State Bank in the amount of $558,744.66 for two, 2022, 140-15, all-wheel-drive J motor graders.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair done.
Yeah. Okay, I guess we need somebody to oversee shredding of the 2020 primary and general election ballots.
Yes, so we are ready to shred the ballots from 2020, the 2020 election. We have to keep those for 22 months after the election has happened, so we, on September 1st, we were at that deadline where we could then shred those ballots. We don't currently have any objections that are outstanding, that we would prevent us from shredding these ballots. So I'm just requesting today that you appoint a representative from the Democratic Party and a representative from the Republican Party to oversee the shredding of the ballots. Of course, I'll, I'll be there to, to help out with this, but the representatives that I'm requesting that you appoint are Linda Alderman from the Democratic Party and Dell McReynolds from the Republican Party.
That's something new.
So we've never been, in my time here, we've never been notified that we had to appoint representatives, but the Secretary of State notified us all a few weeks ago that we needed to appoint representatives. So now that I'm aware of that, then we will definitely be diligent in, in appointing people to shred. I think we've only shredded twice while I've been here, once shortly after I came, just because we'd amassed so many boxes of ballots that needed to be shredded, and then one other time, we did. So we're trying to get more on a schedule to do this.
We have, just have a big bonfire instead, just?
We definitely can do that, and that's something that I talked about with Pat, because that would probably be quicker than, than the shredding process.
Homecoming bonfires.
So the problem with having a, a burn barrel, if you will, is that they're so compact and they're, you know, in the sacks, that you would effectively have to have someone stirring the pot the whole time. So while the shredding will take longer, it's more effective, and that will leave the paper, so they could still recycle it, so.
So I would make a motion to appoint Linda Alderman as the Democratic Representative and Dell McReynolds as the Republican Representative to be President at the District of Ballots from the 2020 primary and general elections.
Second.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair done.
Yes. This is first, like Don said, first time I've.
Yeah.
Ever heard of this.
Yeah.
I thought we kept everything forever.
I don't have room to keep all this stuff forever.
Okay, that, that concludes our regular business for the day. Go around the room, see if anybody has anything to say.
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. We've talked a lot about, and Paul can certainly come up and discuss this if he wants to, we've talked a lot, at least Paul and I have, about Proximity Park and land prices at Proximity Park and just development of the, you know, the city of Ottawa and Franklin County in general. On Friday, Roy, Ian, and I are going to meet with city manager, a couple city commissioners, USD 290 superintendent, Paul, just to have a, a smaller, more intimate discussion about that, and discussing it with the group when you have all of the governing bodies in the room and staff from various entities and, and other entities that don't really have anything to do with development in the room. It's easy to get sidetracked and, and not really drill down into the details and have the conversations that really matter. So we're at least going to attempt this on Friday and see if that will lead to, to better discussions about, yeah, how to price that land, how to move forward collectively with development out there, so. On Monday, had a great meeting yesterday with Brenda and Pam from the Health Department. Monday, we're gonna have a Board of Health meeting, looking forward to it. They have a lot of information that they want to disseminate to the five of you. I think it will lead to productive discussion, so after the study session, we'll convene a Board of Health meeting and move forward. And then finally, Amy, Hodo and I sat down with Dr. Ransom to talk about, so he's no longer our medical director, obviously, but he's still our coroner, still willing to do that, but he is retired, and he does eventually want to transition, and, and that's proving to be a difficult thing to find, and I will also tell you what we're learning is, we've gotten a fantastic deal for those services over the course of these years. And so just know that's something that is being worked on, and that's ultimately going to come in front of you, but I can't promise you that I'm gonna be able to secure that at the same rate that we had Dr. Bud, and I'm not sure that, that we can continue to ask Dr. Bud to do it at the same rate that he has been, so, but there will be more to come on that. That's really all I have, so.
Okay. Paul, okay.
Just here today to give you an update. As you know, back when COVID-19 first hit, the fire department and EMS here in the city of Ottawa separated. What we are finding is, just by reviewing times, that logistically, it's starting to prove a challenge for not only EMS, but also the fire department. And from that, we tried to enter into some contractual agreements with the fire department on co-housing together, and I'm gonna let Derek speak from that part about the contract.
Well, we just, we weren't able to agree. We weren't able to reduce it in writing. The city of Ottawa was insistent that they be given, basically, they were insistent that in order for us to ultimately terminate the arrangement and do with our building what we wanted, that that had to be ran through their city commission. And I'm never gonna recommend to the five of you that when it comes to county property, which the ambulance station is, that that has to be ran through city commissioners in order to, to. in order to, to dispose of it however we please. And so we're, we just, we weren't able to, we're at an impasse on that. We weren't able to come to an agreement. Yet she still would like to go back to that arrangement. There's absolutely utility in that. We did it for years without the agreement. I'm just kind of at a loss for how to proceed. I, I believe what you're saying about response times. And so certainly feel like we can move forward. It's still our building and without an agreement, we have the authority to utilize it how we see fit. I think the point of the agreement was just to kind of formalize it a little more, outline some parameters, but if, if we're not going to agree absent giving, uh, another governing body authority over our building, then we're better off not doing one at all.
So you had ambulance at, at the second street?
We did, yes, ma'am.
But we do not now?
That is correct.
That's part of the arrangement.
Yeah.
So we would be going back there very, very much shortening response times to the north side of town.
And then they don't.
And they would send a, a fire truck here to our station on Fourteenth Street.
So we would have a fire truck there?
That is correct.
And then we would have an ambulance?
Yes.
How hard is that, just to figure that out?
I know.
So can you just go back before without an agreement? They won't do that?
We can.
That's what.
We can, we absolutely can.
That's why I asked her to come. That is what the recommendation is, is to just.
Get, get it done however.
Resume doing it, but just know we weren't able to reduce this to writing.
I just wanted to keep you informed of, of what was happening with the, with the department.
Yeah.
Any questions about that?
Well, was the part, was the fire department stipulating something for, for the ambulance department?
As Derek had spoke, it was just that they wanted some pretty significant terms of where they could stay and when they could go.
It wasn't the fire department that was dictating it.
Sure.
Came from above. I mean, it was an administrative decision on the city's part.
So you actually have firefighters that are stationed at the ambulance service?
Currently, we do not.
But you would.
We will, we will, yes.
Which is, but you had it before.
Yes, we have. Yes.
Alright.
Yeah, this, this isn't yielding anything new, anything we haven't done for years. Just going back to the way it was prior to COVID.
Sure.
Just an effort to try and formalize who does what, who pays for what.
Exactly.
Can't even put that writing without, that's, without succeeding that to a third party, what we do with the, yeah.
That's exactly right.
If you can do it without putting in a writing, everybody's happy, let's do it.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know we changed, I didn't know we didn't have a ambulance down at the fire station.
Yeah.
We definitely do need it, though.
I'll go back.
It, it definitely does increase our response time to the north side of town. And, and likewise, if there's a, a fire on the south side of town, it increases their response time as well.
Decreases.
Um, yes, yes, sorry, thank you.
Unfortunately, couldn't get it reduced to, or we weren't able to get it reduced to writing, but definitely in favor of the, the end product being better for the taxpayer, the average citizen, so.
Thank you.
Yep, awesome.
Happy operationally, we're able to go back to that now, so.
Thank you. I will move forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Derek?
Morning. Um, I just wanted to let the, uh, the board know that, um, in October, it's seventh, eighth, ninth and tenth, that is the National Faith in Blue Weekend. Um, we have participated in that, um, that national event since its inception. Locally, we will be having events just on the eighth and the ninth, which is Saturday. It's a Saturday and Sunday. On that Saturday, we are participating, joining up with, um, several churches to do a, uh, community serve day. So you'll have law enforcement as well as, um, church members out doing some basic, uh, doing some cleanup and basic, um, like repairs and things like that at, in a neighborhood. This is part is, um, last year, we, we kinda started it and, um, there was only a handful of law enforcement that was there, but we're really pushing it this year. This is kind of serves as a reminder to our people and to the public of why people get into this profession to begin with, which is to help others and to serve others. And this is a way for them to do that outside of a patrol car. And so, um, we think that it is a, that that is a good event. And then on, um, October ninth, um, that evening, um, there will be kind of that carnival fair type thing, a picnic type atmosphere that we've had, that we've done each year, and that'll be this year at Hope Anthem Church. And so, um, I just want, I would like to invite the, um, the commissioners to, uh, to attend that. It's a gr- great opportunity. We team up with us, um, Ottawa Police Department, Wellsville Police Department. And this is just a big community engagement event, um, for the public to get to know, um, our deputies and officers a, a little bit better and vice versa. So, um, again, we'll be participating in that this year and, uh, just wanted to invite you all to, to attend. So other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Do you have the community picked out, the part of the talent or the, where you're? Usually you have an area that you're.
They do have that, they do have that selected already. That, um, the Minister, Minister Alliance, or it is who is kinda heading that up and they just, they'll, they'll tell us where to go.
There you go.
So, but, but yes, they have that already selected.
Cool.
That was a nice, uh, nine eleven, uh, ceremony there Sunday.
Yes, yeah, we did have our annual, uh, nine eleven ceremony down at the Veterans Memorial. And, um, that's hosted primarily by the Ottawa Fire Department. And then they invite, um, the other agencies to participate in that as well, so. Um, it's, I think it was a good thing. It's kinda pointed out that now we're getting people, um, in our agencies who weren't even, some of them weren't even born, when, you know, when, when nine eleven happened. It's important on all of us that are, that were around to kind of instill the, that to them. That what I talked about was not just what the attack that happened, but how we, um, as a community and as a, as a nation responded to that. And to try to encourage people to get back to that September twelfth mentality where we were all one team and we all worked together, um, because that's really what it takes for each of us to succeed. And so, um, hopefully, we, we can instill that type of mindset in, in our, in our younger employees and, and citizens.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Dustin, you got anything? Okay. David?
Just to give you, um, it's been a while since I've kinda updated what the road and bridge folks have been up to. Uh, in the last week, they've, uh, cleaned, uh, bridge decks around the guardrails, removed drift and debris from four, uh, bridge decks. There are four bridges in the north central part of the county. They've also completed three ditching projects. One, um, at Idaho and Clark Road, another Montana north of Sand Creek, and finally Georgia, south of Lebette. Uh, crews have also trimmed trees along Lebette, west of Greenwood Estates. Uh, a couple of sections on Idaho, uh, between, uh, Osborne and Pawnee, and then, uh, on Shawnee, west of Indiana. Uh, today, they're working on a bridge, uh, on Tennessee, north of Butler. And we're also gonna be rebuilding stretches of, uh, ditches and shoulders on Eisenhower. It's about a two-mile stretch, um, uh, south of Jackson. Uh, also, I received, uh, a request from the city of Ottawa. They are gonna be having a second citywide cleanup on the fourteenth and fifteenth of October. And they, uh, reached out to see if we'd be willing to waive dump fees for them again. And so I'm asking if.
Is that just for the residents of?
Yeah, just for the city.
So wouldn't, so if you weren't a resident of Ottawa, you would not?
That's correct.
How much, uh, do you have an estimate? How many, how many dumpsters they'll have?
I, they're only gonna do two locations this time around. Uh, I don't anticipate the volume to be as significant as, as it is in the spring. But, um, there will be several dumpsters, I would say. You know, one way to look at it is possibly this will help keep some of this being illegally dumped out in the county where our forces would have to, uh, move off of road projects and that sort of thing to go and pick it up. But I'm, otherwise, I'm, I mean, they're obviously gonna go ahead with it.
But this is just for the, the stuff that's in the dumpsters, not so? If I drove out to there, I would still be paying, it would be just the dumps?
It is just what, uh, what is put in the roll-offs that are set at, at the two locations that they've identified. And then when those roll-offs, uh, hit the transfer station, we wouldn't charge them. Y- y- if that is something that you all would like to participate in.
Keeping the real ditches cleaned up a little bit doesn't hurt anything. I think that's, uh, headed the right direction. Cause if they don't have a place to put it, they're gonna find a place to put it.
Yeah.
Anybody have any problems with that? Eric, do you see a problem with that?
I, I mean, no, I think this is really just a, a financial decision. I know, I don't have any issue with it. I, I think it's just, yeah, do the five of you wanna partner on it, or?
Well, I don't have any problem with it. Maybe probably other cities might think about doing the same thing.
If that occurs, then, you know, that's a, maybe a larger conversation, but, um, there hasn't, you know, city of Ottawa's been the only one to reach out to us so far.
Oh, I think if that occurs, then we're gonna do it for the city of Ottawa. We need to do it for the other communities.
Well, they're, they're paying for the dumpsters, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
It's just the, uh, it's just the tipping fees.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good with it.
The only concern is setting the precedent. It's now every other, if he wants to do a fall cleanup within there, and then we're getting into some real tonnage. And at a certain point, that's tonnage that won't go over the scale and generate revenue. So it counts both ways. Not only are we paid to get rid of it, but we're not getting paid for it, so. And there does become a point where you need to, okay, how much money do we wanna put towards this and, and win and?
But if we're picking, picking it up off the country roads, then we're not getting paid for it either, so.
Certainly, we can do a little bit of analysis and determine approximately how much, um, you know, what our contribution is based on the spring cleanup that we have annually. We can come up with some rough costs as, as what it is costing the county each time we do these.
The city already does one cleanup in addition to our spring cleanup, so this.
Um, no, the, they participate in that.
Did they move the times where they're the same? Because in the past, we've had our spring cleanup and then they've turned around and done another cleanup.
The last couple of years, they've been kinda in the same timeframe with, um, typically it will be the city of Ottawa, then the folks, um, one side of fifty-nine and then the other side, and then countywide, all in April, I believe it is.
They have had a cleanup in addition to our spring.
Have they?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which I never understood.
I'm willing to try it, at least this year. See if that works myself, I don't.
Yeah.
Anything else, Derek?
No, sir.
Uh?
Be open when we have other talent coming. I don't, I don't have a problem with it though. As long as we're open to the other people too.
Hey, has it come this dawn? You're up. Talking about the car show or something?
We're on to commissioners' comments, Don, and do you have any?
Yeah, Mr. Comments now.
Oh, this part?
No, just generally.
Oh, what was it, Gerald, I'm sorry. Oh, I died. I really haven't anything. I'd like to comment on our budget hearing. I thought administration did a very good job presenting, uh, and I wish those people could've been here today. And seventy-five percent of our agenda today was cuts and savings. And, uh, you know, uh, you know, it, 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 it was, it was hard to bring those subjects up a few the other night. This is a good example. They, they just could've attended this meeting today and seen seventy-five percent of our items today was cost savings, uh, items. You know, I thought Janet did a great job addressing a lot of the questions from her research that she did on, uh, some topics. And there was a lot of things we could've said, but I think Roy did a good job and everybody else of allowing it to, uh, kinda take, take a road of its own and, and I got, I know everybody else did too. I got a lot of good comments from people, emails and comments that, uh, what the board did and administration, part of it did a very good job. That was the budget hearing. Honestly, just like I said before, this probably was one of the hardest years I ever been here on some decisions that we had to make one way or another. We've always had problems. We've never had, just the whole gamut was a problem, you know? We either had employee problems or we, uh, you know, equipment problems or, or, uh, medical or insurance problems. But this year, we had them all, one big disaster. So, um, I thought we'd, I thought. Administration and staff, uh, did a great job. And I didn't, and I, and then I told people, you know, it wasn't enough to brag about here, I mean, you know, because we have to, you know, we have to make those decisions more. And I, I, you know, I, I, I wish people could be on days like today when they like to, to do seventy-five percent. Try to find, find savings and cut the budget.
You know, going to a budget hearing and objecting to the entire budget is kinda like going to a wedding and objecting to the wedding because you wanna date the bride or go on a date with the bride and see what that'd be like. And to say, hey, I've got ten people, we're very, very, uh, passionate about this item. If you don't take action and you don't do what we want right now, then this is not a representative meeting. This meeting's pointless, this is not representative government. If we did what they wanted right then, it would not be representative to the hundred people who took part in the process preceding that hearing. So it's not, I think we made the right decision, but it's, uh, big picture, uh, you know, to call the, the budget hearing worthless or pointless or, or meaningless when, you know, that's the only part of the process you can see, then it's, I guess, a little short sighted.
Uh, Rob, you got anything?
I'm, I have nothing.
I would one hundred percent agree that the budget that we adopted was well thought out. And for the people who thought we should've been cutting the budget, we had been cutting the budget for two months. And, and that's where we ended up. And, and where we ended up was, um, providing for our employees, um, taking care of some software issues that needed to be taken care of for a long time, uh, defusing some debt. It's all, it was all good. The city of Ottawa also approved their budget last Wednesday evening. And then on Monday at their study session, um, some, some, these are kind of exciting things. I thought, uh, they're looking at putting a splash pad. I'm not sure where yet they're gonna determine, uh, where in Ottawa. That might be a good thing, but they're actually looking to maybe having one available, um, by next year. So, um, they're gonna be looking for input from citizens on where it might be a good place to put it and, uh, all the things that might be available there. Um, they are also putting together some moderate income housing projects, uh, for some money that's available from the state that they're gonna submit by the end of the month. Um, and then they have agreed to purchase the, what is now the Country Club, um, the whole facility. And they're gonna apply for a Department of Wildlife and Parks grant to help facilitate that. Uh, Mike Skidmore also on Monday announced that he has returned from the bank by the end of the year. So that is one of the reasons he said he's gonna push for as much money as he can get from the Copper Foundation before he is no longer part of the bank, so. On Friday, they had, uh, chamber coffee at Kramer Pharmacy to, uh, announce the new owners. And it's the, the gentleman who also owns Auburn Pharmacy and Garnet. And I didn't realize, but they own like thirty-five. And I didn't realize, but they own like thirty-five pharmacies in Kansas. They're just committed to keeping small-town pharmacies, um, available. And when you own thirty, it's a lot easier to buy, uh, what you need than if you own one. And so, he's actually, I mean, it's really exciting that he's keeping them open. And then, I'm also on the Fourth Judicial District Nominating Committee, kind of a interesting development. We have three, um, people that had put their, their, to be the new magistrate judge in Coffee County, and two have withdrawn, so now we have one. So, I'm not sure where we're going forward with that, but maybe by next week, we'll have a new one, or maybe we won't. But I'll keep you informed, and that's all I have.
I don't have anything, uh. I did, I, I forgot it. So, anyway, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm in a second. Or adjourn.